Please rise to the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a quorum, so minutes for the meeting of October 2nd. Anybody have a chance to review?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second to approve minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Minutes are approved. Open the public meeting. First item on the agenda is Hendrick's County Amateur Radio Service, Gordon Cotton.
I'd like to thank the council for allowing us to give you a report on our activities in this county. What we have been doing is we've installed four permanent antennas in the county for use at emergency purposes. One is located northwest of Pittsboro on the Gentry Farm at 275 East and 1,000 North. One is located on the Brownsburg Water Department's Communication Tower. One is located on the Weekly Farm on Highway 236 halfway between Danville and North Salem. And the fourth one is located on the former Belleville Volunteer Fire Department's Communication Tower on 200 East and US 40, south of here. The purpose we've installed those antennas is that we can take our portable integrated gear, which is an amateur radio with a battery supply and a power supply, out to those antennas by any conveyance we can get it there. So in case of a disaster, if the roads are blocked, we could take a bike, snowmobile, ATV, whatever method we can get, we can get out to one of those antennas, hook up our portable integrated device, and we can be on the air immediately. Since we've installed those antennas, we've done a communication test to make sure that all four antennas can communicate with each other. We've determined that they can. We were concerned about the furthest distance, which would be the Gentry Farm and the Belleville because of the distance there, and we were able to communicate. We've also done a footprint test, and we've determined that we can cover about 95 percent of the county with amateur radio using small handheld radios. All of the major metropolitan areas of the county, which would be Danville, Brownsburg, Avon, Plainfield, would be totally covered, and some of the smaller communities to the west would be covered. So then in case of an emergency, that we would be able to place our amateur radio operators, for instance, in a police car or in a fire truck with a portable device and with our antennas already hooked up, we would be able to communicate countywide. So in a case that they would lose their communication, we would be able to provide a backup for them. Also in the county, both hospitals have radios, and we conduct monthly tests to make sure that they can still communicate. There's also a radio in the EOC. Future for the county, the new hospital in Brownsburg will have a radio as part of the hospital communication. The hospitals are also going to go digital so that we will be able to have a computer and amateur radio, and they will be able to send email-type messages between the hospitals. And in the case that the internet actually went down onto one hospital, if another hospital still has it, using the radio as a link, we would be able to send an email from the hospital without internet through the radio to the hospital with internet and send an email out and receive one back the same way. The health department is also purchasing a radio so that they would be part of our system. Also, Morgan County is now beginning to duplicate what we have here in this county with their two hospitals. When their hospitals are up and running, we will then provide a link so that all five hospitals will be able to communicate with each other. So in a case of a major disaster, there would be a five-hospital net that would be able to communicate with each other to help each other out. That's what we have been doing. All of our amateur radio, half of our amateur radio operators are National Incident Management System, Incident Command System modules, 100, 200, 700, and 800, trained and certified, which are some of the same modules that the first responders are also trained in. So that if we had to deploy somebody with a first responder, that they would have the same FEMA training in those modules that our first responders have. Do I have any questions? Yes.
How quick to respond?
How quick can we respond? As soon as the EMA director directs us to be responding, we can have one of our portable integrated gear at an antenna within, I'm about the furthest one away, and I would have mine out to the Weekly Farm. If I could use my vehicle, I can be out there in about 10 minutes.
Where do you get your money from?
We are volunteers. We use our own equipment and our own time. We do not depend on any funding.
They like to do it.
That's why we're here. That's why we're volunteers.
Part of the hobby.
Yeah. It's a hobby that we like to provide a service to when in need. For instance, when the hurricanes in Texas and in Florida hit, there were some areas like the Keys, the only communication they had was amateur radio. When the hurricanes went through the islands, Puerto Rico and all those islands down there, amateur radio was the only means of communication that they had. Because amateur radio was self-sufficient and self-contained, like our portable integrated gear, we can run off of batteries. If the grid goes down, we can still communicate.
How many amateur radio operators?
We have 63 that are part of our organization, but we have several hundred that are actually licensed. And I forgot to mention, also with me tonight is Ron Burke, who is our emergency coordinator, and I'm an assistant emergency coordinator.
There's probably about, probably a thousand amateur radio operators. Close right now. Of the 60.
So in our area, would you say the most likely use would be in a tornado situation?
In this area, it would be more than likely a tornado or a severe thunderstorm that could bring tree limbs down, block roads, or take out power lines and take everything down. In this county, as you're probably well aware, the central communication system is down there in Plainfield. If that sucker went down, everybody's down. So we would be able to immediately respond to their needs as soon as we're directed to do so. We do not self-employ. We have to wait for either the EMA director or one of the first responder chiefs to ask us about.
Would you be considered our civil defense?
That makes it sound old time.
Yeah, that's...
Do we still have civil defense? I've been away a long time.
I remember the CD, no, we're work communication to provide, we are a group to provide communication in the case of a disaster or emergency. So...
We would be able to resource or aid resources.
To the county.
We have that.
We are one of three counties in the whole state that has a hospital system like we have, and from all of the counties in the state, our communication system that we have in place is more advanced than any of the rest of the counties.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you for the effort that you and your group put into it, and I hope for all of our sake we don't ever need it, but we're glad to know it's there.
We're like an insurance policy. We hope we never need it, but we're glad you're there when we do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I feel safer now.
All right, next is progress on the roundabout. Is Julie here? There she is, hiding in the back.
I think it's been in the east side of town, you know the roundabout is not open. The weather kind of bit everyone in the tail. The, I have a new schedule with me. The date, their tentative date to open is November the 2nd. That's the date that they have given me. There is some fluff built into that schedule. Now, how many days of fluff? I don't know, but they have, that's in case they have more rain days. So I don't know how many days they've given. I probably don't want to know how many days because chances are we're going to get more rain. We won't, we're not supposed to have rain this week, but next week is anybody's guess. So pavement will start going down on Wednesday. The concrete apron went in today, the truck apron went in today, so the pavement will start going down Wednesday with curb and the subsequent layers of pavement following. So we're gonna, it's gonna be a tough trick keeping everyone off of it, but we are, but it's been tough to keep them off of the dirt, so I don't know. I don't know, short of locking the doors, I don't know how we're gonna keep people off of it, but we're gonna try some extreme measures here in the next couple of days to keep people off of it. Keep people out of yards, we'll do what we can. We're close, we just, now we just need the dry weather to dry things out.
Are the people on the corners bothering you?
No. I mean, they've been as cooperative as they can be. I mean, it's an inconvenience for them, but for the most part, they've been, you know, as cooperative as they can be. I mean, we've got their driveways blocked, and they're, we're trying to keep traffic in and out of their businesses and everything else, and finer details has been good about Saturday, for example, Saturday afternoon, some kids got onto the site and were on the equipment and taking pictures and selfies and everything on the contractor's equipment, and so she called the police for us and filed a report and ran them off. And so...
So nobody's throwing apples at you or anything?
No, no, no. And she called, but she called and let me know, and I think she ran them off. By the time the police got there, I think the kids were gone. And she lets me know how many cars a day drive through the site before, you know...
Is it mostly their property that they're pulling through?
Oh, no, she's talking about they're actually getting on the roundabout and driving around the roundabout.
And this is Jim, you're doing a great job. This is not, oh yeah, we, I meant to text you. We need to get more guys out there because just the other day, I know for a fact that she sent me three pictures of three different cars that were turning right, going through the apartments to the French church. That's a lot of grass to get through.
Oh, yeah.
So I mean, granted, I hope people will think, but apparently we've got some people right here that don't want to think, and we need to ticket them and stop that because they're doing a very good job.
And the apartments have it blocked off. They have the, they have the snow markers, they have it blocked off, and people are just driving right over the top of them. It's incredible.
You guys are doing a very good job.
I know, it's...
Rather than take five minutes out of their day, they're really in somebody else's yard their whole life.
I believe me, I get it. They want to drive over the top of us when we're standing on the site. Well, why can't I drive through there? It's just, I just need to be right there. We're standing right here. Just part of the deal.
That's my question, is it mostly the southeast quadrant that we're having those people, trouble with people going through?
No, well, it's the east side, east side in general. Because the northwest side, they cut through the fairgrounds, even though they've been asked not to, they're all cutting through there. But through the chiropractor's office, they have no other choice. But they could, you know, through Walmart is a quick, is a quick cut. I mean, that's, that's not an easy, that's an easy go-around. It's just the east side, the detour is longer, and it's an extra five minutes that they don't want to take, and they just...
But that was my thought as well, is having, if we have the people to have somebody sit out there and ticket people, because that's the only way that we're gonna stop it.
Yeah. And unfortunately, there were days that they cut through the roundabout and rutted up the work that was done that day, and they rutted up. Water sits in there, and it just takes longer for it to dry, it just takes longer for us to get our job. But pavement goes down Wednesday, and things will go faster once that first course of, yeah, then they'll, they're like crazy people. Then that, they're moving as fast as they can. Oh, I don't disagree. It's just people being impatient. It is what it is. It's every construction project.
Is this an unusual amount of this type of thing?
No, it's just because it's an intersection. It's because you've got traffic coming from four directions. If you had the road closed in the, like, say you had a bridge, you would only have, you'd only suffer this from two directions. We're just suffering the consequence from four directions. It's typical. It's just human nature.
Well, I know Dr. Brett here, he represents one of those corners, so we appreciate your patience with us as well.
And it doesn't matter how many signs say road closed. They just don't pay attention, or they don't care, or they assume there's another, I know.
Yeah. I got a sidebar, doesn't it? The center of the roundabout, I've had somebody inquire from American Legion, if anybody called them about what to do in the center, and then an individual said they were gonna do something with the center. Something should come, have us to vote on and not be asking anybody to do anything unless it comes to us. So what's going on behind the scenes that we don't know about, about the center?
Nothing planned.
Nobody contacted the Legion about the center?
No. Someone from the Blues... Want to come to the council with...
I got an email from the Legion saying, "I'm from the town council." Making sure.
Yeah, no, there's an easy one's gonna go in there. Wasn't part of the project, so there's nothing but grass.
I was gonna say, is the center of a built-up, or is it, right now it's just grass, is it or...
Yeah, it will be when it's done. You know, there has been some confusion among the rank and file about your center, and it's about the truck apron and what that entails, because your center is grass, and that's the way it's being left. You have power running to the center in case you ever want to light anything up, or you, you know, you've got something in there that you want to light up. But the truck apron, because there's been some confusion about the width of this roundabout and the fact that it's not a two-lane roundabout and that sort of thing. But I think the misconception for people is it's not a very wide roundabout, but your center island is a mountable, has a mountable curb, and the truck apron is meant to be driven on, not necessarily as a passing lane, but for trucks, fire trucks and everything, that, I mean, that's meant to be for people to, for these larger vehicles to get around. I mean, we're not using it as a passing lane, but I think there is some confusion out there just by reading the chatter page and that sort of thing. I know, I think people are misunderstanding, they think this has been built too small, but it's not. The truck apron is meant to be driven on for those wheels to come up. I mean, it's, it's a very stout apron.
Which means you're...
That I don't know. I don't know, I wasn't involved in any of the pre-construction meetings, but...
That was well discussed.
It was well discussed.
So there's curbing, there's curbing between where the truck apron turns into the turf?
Right. It's called mountable curb. It's basically a, it's a shorter roll curb.
I know from the, from the road to the truck apron, but then from the truck apron to the turf in the middle, there's curbing?
There is, but it's tall. It's not, that's, that's stand-up curb. You cannot, that is not mountable curb.
I think that's the point, is you want to be able to...
That's got eight-inch exposure. No, that's got eight-inch exposure. No, that'll be, if they can, if they can get up on that, then they've done some damage to their vehicle.
Gotcha.
Well, many, many times throughout this process, that's what's been discussed on chatter and every place else, is that it is built for those wider vehicles, but it's not a two-lane.
Right, right.
People are just gonna complain about it until they've had an opportunity to get through it and...
Sure. Well, that portion of it is poured now. It's poured, they finished it up this afternoon. It's poured, it's ready, and once the asphalt goes down, I think they'll see that it's a little smoother transition. It's gonna take a few days to get all those layers of asphalt down. I mean, it's gonna take a few days to finish it up.
Yep, Dr. Brett.
Stamping is time-consuming.
Any other questions for Julie? Thanks for keeping them on task and keeping us up to date. I appreciate it.
No problem.
Next is Resolution 14, 2017 fiscal plan for annexed areas.
Written fiscal plan that we have to adopt. Step will be in November, option for annexed property will come before you, so this is just our, it's just a resolution to use.
Questions for Laura on this? I would entertain a motion to approve.
Second motion.
You're making the motion?
I make a motion that we approve Resolution 14-2017, written fiscal plan establishing a policy for the provisions and services to annexed areas. Second motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 14, 2017 fiscal plan. Looking for the address. 850 Merrill Williams. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Okay, ordinance 20, 2017, establish park and recreation fund.
This ordinance just needs to be introduced tonight. I have sent it to legal counsel for their approval, and they are in the process of reviewing it now, but this ordinance establishes the park fund that we talked about in the budgeting process, that all of park and recreations finances will go into this new fund, and they will not be deposited into the general fund.
Okay, next is Atlas Collection contracts.
Al is here with the Atlas Collection Company. As you guys are aware, in July, and the recording fees went up for filing sewer liens on properties, and they went up in recording them and releasing them. So I started looking for other ways, and we started looking for other ways that we could start collecting on sewer and storm water and actual water, because we currently can't collect on past due water accounts, we can only collect on the sewer and storm water portions of it. In doing so, I put a question out on listserv, and Atlas Collections kept coming back, and they come, very highly recommended from the state and several clerk treasurers. About the agreement that I would like to go into with them.
So you've got a contract, I think, within your packet there. Just the short story is, and I really, Jenny, thank you for the invitation to come tonight, was really just to answer questions, because the contract's before you, but also from the community, too. I think it's a major change in policy and in procedures that you've had with previous clerk treasurers and maybe with previous councils. So whenever there's a change like that, we like to be totally transparent and just say, hey, if anybody's got questions, or their business is dealt with an agency, either good or bad, or individuals have that, I think you, I'd rather take the heat than you take the heat, honestly. The great thing about this is statute 522 6.5, the state has provided, and it's been out there forever, but it's amazing how few communities really, throughout the state, really take advantage of it. Our services are free. There is no charge to the town of Danville by any means. All the fees will be added on top per that statute, and it allows for that to happen within that, for really any ordinance violations. We had had the opportunity to meet with your town manager, and I know Sheriff was, was in that meeting, and some of the other representatives from some of your other departments. This can go for any ordinance violation. So if you have a weed-cutting issue in Muncie, we do this with, they have, they're tearing down a lot of houses, a lot of old houses, a lot of old crack houses that are being torn down. Those fees for tearing down those houses are also being assessed, and that's a different bucket. So we can set up, per this contract, any, any buckets that you want. You can have as many as you want for every department. That way reimbursement and statements at the end of the month would come to each of those buckets, and we can keep those funds, excuse me, keep those funds separate. So we're happy to do that with any, with any way that you want to cut it up. We don't, we won't address it, Jenny will tell us, well, I want these six buckets set up, and that's what, the way we'll go. We'll add 30% on top, so if somebody owes the water department $100, we're gonna collect $130, we're gonna keep 30, you get your 100, we go down the road. If there's a partial payment made, it's just, everybody gets a cut. I think it ends up being 67, 23 is kind of how that plays out, because things happen to individuals. They either don't pay it, they leave anyway. The hardest thing is, is really the quality of the information. So if you really want to ask where the Achilles' heel has been, and we've addressed that, we've, there's a plan in place that we will act as an advisor on trying to acquire better information. The reality is, if you went out to your school corporation right now, I would, I would anticipate that somewhere between 40 and 60% of all the information within your school from registration time, we're only talking here a few months, is all bad. People have already moved, their flip phones have been shut off, they've got a new phone, phone numbers are bad, all that. So you've got to be diligent with doing that, because the better the information, the better the recoveries will be. But we're gonna take that and look back a couple of years and just try to get some cash flow going with that. So I may be the only people, maybe the only person ever comes in your career in front of you, and my, my job and the product I'm going to provide is actually gonna send you a check. So hopefully we're the, the positive side that maybe pays for part of the roundabout that they can't stay out of, so. So I'm happy, please, with any questions, sir. Tom, you certainly have...
Oh, yes, sir.
Oh, great.
And I see that if we recall, before you send a statement, we don't pay you for that, but what happens if the first statement goes out, and then they come in here to our office and pays the outstanding balance that we had? Do we then remit a portion of half of the...
Absolutely. And that's a great day. And we don't care whether they, whether they pay us or pay you, makes no difference. The reality is that many will still come, they do it for two reasons. One, it's convenient, okay? And two, they're trying to apologize. And we think that there, they should be an opportunity. Does it matter? I think it does matter a little bit within a community to be able to have and come and do that, and they may want to come and apologize because they think, you know, Jenny's sitting there just waiting for them to, to pay that one bill, which is not the case, but when you're dealing with a local community, I think there needs to be some luxury with that. Just so you have some assurance, we're not the hammer. The, the rule of thumb is you're kind with kind people and you're tough with tough people, okay? And believe me, some of the phone calls are very interesting. Some of the individuals we're chasing in your community are very interesting. I would think Sheriff probably knows a few of them well, and that's just the way it is. And that's true in all communities, so, is what it is.
I guess my question is, if they pay the total invoice, your total invoice...
Yep.
Of course we would, but if it's just what we build them...
Doesn't make any difference. We would still, well, we would still, they would, they'll report those direct payments to us.
But I don't have a problem with that, I'm just wanting to clarify.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we just, it's just...
Yeah.
Anybody else, any other questions? I'm happy to take.
And I'll add, too, that our internal process isn't changing, so I'll still send out the letter when they're 30 days delinquent, when they're 60 days delinquent. Our internal process won't be changing, it's just to where they get to they haven't paid and, you know, where we would be going to file the lien. We will be now turning those over.
It's just a ramp up. Yeah. Anybody else, anything? Sir? We'll, we'll do, really, there are two stages of that. We're gonna send out a statement, we're gonna send out one statement. They would have gotten two to three statements from the water department. We're gonna send out a statement, we're validating that debt, and that's, in our business, that's a big deal. We have to validate that debt. They have 30 days for the time that we send that statement. It just sets that we don't make any phone calls in the first day. And after that, then we're tracking them down. There's a lot of the information, the addresses are wrong, probably if anybody in the room...
Yes.
Probably if anybody in the room, Doc probably knows this process better than anybody else. We're at that point just trying to find them and then phone calls are going to start. They have options. They do not have to pay at all at one time. Sometimes there's a large bill and they can't pay it, so we're going to work out payment arrangements. So it's typically a two step. It's very possible that that's, and that's always an option and that's something that Jenny always has the, absolutely, absolutely.
Any other questions? No questions, I entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
And we have a motion and a second to approve the contract between Atlas Collection and the town of Danville. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, same sign.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Thanks for the business. We appreciate it. Do you mind if I scoot out? I do have to go back to Muncie and it's a little, it's a little over 15 minutes as long as it's, as long as the courtesy.
No problem at all. Yeah, you're fine.
Thank you for your business. We appreciate your very time.
All right, next we have Ordinance 21, 2017 Approved Real Estate Transfer.
The council did approve the quitclaim deeds for the center township cemetery over next door, but it also, some of you may remember, Indiana statute requires like ordinances or resolutions between the two bodies. So if you have that, it can record it. And what center township has already passed their like ordinance and this ordinance was prepared by Steve Bushman for them and it mirrors what they did.
Was it announced, was it read as a named ordinance when we reviewed it before so it has to suspend the rules? And I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules. Here a second. We have a motion and a second to spend the rules to act on Ordinance 21, 2017. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, same sign. Rules have been suspended. Entertain a motion to approve the ordinance. Here a second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt and approve and adopt Ordinance 21, 2017 Ordinance to Approve Transfer of Real Estate. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, same sign. Ordinance 22, 2017 Bond Ordinance to Approve, Provide for Issuance.
Ordinance 22 and Ordinance 23 are brother and sister. Ordinance 22 is the bond ordinance telling out the amount to be issued and how the bonds are going to be done. And dealing with Ice Miller, they're asking that Ordinance 22, that the rules be suspended and the council act upon that tonight. At the next meeting in November, Ordinance 23 will appropriate $350,000 into the town's budget and it will be duly advertised as a public hearing. That's the reason why Ordinance 22 should be adopted tonight. Ordinance 23 introduced by title only.
Ordinance 23, 2017 has been presented, need to suspend the rules to act on 22.
I'm going to suspend the rules.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules on Ordinance 22, 2017 to provide issuance of bonds. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, same sign. All right, the rules has been suspended. Entertain a motion to approve the ordinance. Here a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve and adopt Ordinance 22, 2017 Bond Ordinance to Provide Issuance. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, same sign. It's approved. Okay, next is Request for Work Study.
Working with Endeavor Fiber Optic folks. They're geared up, moving forward. What they would like though is a work study with the council. They want to work with the council to identify those areas in which they will come in and perform a build out of fiber. But they want to come in, they want to work hand in hand with the council, make sure that they're not overlooking something. And so council basically has some say in the neighborhood build out. So this is their request. They're looking at the 23rd or the 30th.
Why is November 6th not an option? Meeting night?
Because they're anxious to get started.
Some of us travel for our jobs and we're here on Mondays when we have meetings, so I'd rather do the 6th.
Council can do what they'd like to do, I'm just asking.
There's other things that need to be in it.
And we've worked on this for multiple years and been anxious to get started on it and this is the first time they've come to us and asked for this.
Well, I know Mike prefers Monday to have meetings, I know I do.
Well. In our, in our rules and regs that say that work studies are to be scheduled on generally the 4th Monday, and I understand that our.
On the 1st and 3rd Mondays.
Well, we do it because, because we don't want to take, we don't want to take the time to do it on those other weeks. And I think we need to commit the time to the.
I'd rather commit the time on the 6th earlier.
It makes no difference to me.
Well, we're already scheduled for 5:30 on the 6th because of business we've already set aside. And the reason that the problem, the reason it's a problem to have those work studies on meeting nights is because we don't have enough time to, to address the things that we're here to do.
Do we have the flags on?
We have the flags on the 6th.
That's at 5:30.
Yes.
So an hour and a half for flags?
I wasn't willing to set that, I don't know.
I would say.
Already here on the 6th.
Well, I'm available the 23rd or the 30th if anybody else is.
Fine with the 23rd to 30th or the 6th. If they are pressing us and they have a preference and it does expedite what we have been working for, then I would prefer more sense than the 30th.
Is it October?
This would be.
I'm for any of those days.
This would be next week.
Oh, yeah.
I agree. I think, I think we all can absolutely agree that it does make logical sense to try to achieve things on a, on a meeting night.
I would agree with that.
But we've sort of pressed it over the last four years of trying to do them before. I don't think we need an hour.
Well, forgive me, but you have pressed those meetings to be held on meeting nights.
Mike has two, so that's two.
There have been many occasions where we needed to have work studies on a separate work. Well, I think there's three of us here that agree that the 30th or the 23rd.
Yeah, well, just do it then. We've been doing, I'll be here.
My 3rd.
My 3rd, sorry, me.
Thank you. Okay.
Time on that, or we just?
5:36, what time?
6:00 o'clock would be fine. Okay, Department Head Reports, Water.
The, last month, I come to you guys about our study that was done on our water towers. Since then, met with Ken Elliott from Banning and we're putting together a thing for November 6th, the council meeting, to see about moving forward, how we want to schedule the tanks and do everything that we're trying to do for that. Yeah.
Schedule the tank to paint?
Uh, but paint, maintenance, whatever, yeah.
Which tank?
First tank will probably be the North Elementary. That's one, that's first, first priority. Then the next tank would be the one at the hospital. And then we're, we're looking at its mother. No, not yet.
Why not?
Because that's not my decision. I think what we talked about is, I think that should be a town decision along with the council, with the pulse of historical value of that tank. We're looking in also too that the, about the cost of possibly tear it down versus keeping it up or possibly just an overcoat on the tank and not doing all the major stuff to do a water blast on, just an overcoat and, and.
So you know my feeling.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
350,000?
Well, I don't think we're going to spend that much money on that.
Yeah, and the tank has no water in it.
Yeah.
We don't use it for anything.
Yeah, yeah.
It sits there. Why don't we just take it down?
Well, that's not my.
No historical.
That's not my decision.
No, I'm just, listen to everybody so they can hear this.
Yeah, yeah. And I, my, my thing is, we just kind of get the overall what, A, B, or C, what we want to do and.
Will you have, will you come up with a cost of, how much it costs to tear it down?
That's what, yeah, that's what they're, that's what the engineers.
As long as you come up with that.
When I met with the engineers, we're, we're doing some evaluations on the estimates and, and looking into what other options there are on that tank. It may just be.
I see no tourist buses going there.
No.
I don't see people hanging around.
Well, I, I do know that it's in a historical district of town and it has, does have some value. I know the fire department has their antenna on it for that thing because it is up in the air and radios and all that type of stuff. But I, I think, me personally, it's been here since 1892. It should be a town pulse as well as a council.
350,000 to pay for all those cars for the, we wouldn't have to buy a bond then.
Well, well, no, 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 no. This is, this would be, this would be over a period of time because it's, it's not falling apart. It just needs maintenance on it and then if we're looking at what it would cost to tear it down versus just going in, do a water blast on it, blast it down and just do a brush roll paint job on it and leave it empty and make it that and not do all the blasting. Where, yeah, yeah, yeah. A minimal type thing.
It saves a lot of money.
Well, yeah, I'm, no, we're not, we're not going to do that. That's just, but there's other options. And do it like that. But some of the estimates that were given by Dixon may be a little higher because materials have gone up, you know, labor's gone up and stuff. So, and then we've taken some stuff out and added some stuff in that we would like to see done and what needs to be done and, and stuff like that, so. But we'll, we'll have that for you November 6th.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, we'll do that. And then that, that will be for when we bring that and decide what we want to do on that particular tank and kind of go through the other stuff. Get to go ahead, get it started, get the specifications ready for the first of the year so we can get out the bid because it is a scheduling deal. And usually on tanks, you've got a certain window that you can do that stuff. You don't want to do it while it's sweating. Of course, we're going to drop the water out of them and why would we do that? But that's kind of it. Then along, along that too, we, this weekend we had graffiti artists doing their little thing out at the tanks and so we're back in that time of year.
Do you have cameras on those tanks?
No, we do not. But we do have fiber out at each tank and we're going to look in, we're looking in with Will right now about possibly putting cameras at, well, 3 and 4 because we have fiber there also, and then maybe getting cameras at the towers, hopefully, but you've got a big circumference there to cover. And, you know, that tank out at the hospital is just an open lot where you can naturally, if we put a camera up, they're going to see it, but you get up high enough to where hopefully it'll deter.
It'll deter them.
Yeah, yeah. And we've had graffiti before. What's that? No, Matt Ellison went out and, and he, he took care of that. And it just looked like some red spray paint and I've seen some pictures and it, it went by, yeah. Main thing is if they use a, a paint that really bonds to it and you clean it, then you're going to have a natural shadow and then you still got it there. And then trying to match that up, trying to repaint over, it's not very good. So hopefully, hopefully we won't have that because, you know, if we ever catch them, I can, we can get them for community service and I'll take care of that.
As soon as they catch them, they make them work.
Well, that's what we do, yeah, yeah. We'll make them work.
Set cameras everywhere and they catch them all the time.
But that, that's pretty much all I have. As far as water stuff, pumping, pumping has dropped since this time of year. Guys are getting rain now, so I know some droppage and, and stuff like that, so hopefully things will be going. But other than that, that's all I have. Be happy to answer any more questions.
Any questions for Jim?
Notice the voice cast sentences of the community badge? All right, thank you. Thanks.
Planning. Laura.
Thank you.
Fire, Chief Morgan.
Good evening. I apologize, I'm not a little more prepared. I was off today attending the Covered Bridge Festival. So I'm going to do the best I can, obviously. Last week, I attended the AIM conference and had the honor of being asked to serve again next year on the Public Safety Policy Committee, so I'm very excited about that. Also attended a class, had during lunch with Mrs. Parker, we were talking about language barriers. And I attended a class that afternoon on just that topic and it was brought to my attention a service called, I believe it's called Luna. And it's a company that you call in and they have over 100 interpreters of different languages. And so we're going to look into that. We do run into it every once in a while. And I've talked with Mrs. Cooney about the possibility of seeing if we can find a grant to help pay for that service, maybe use it across the town, all the way, you know, police and anybody else who may need it. So kind of excited about that. It was good information, good conference. I'm glad I went. And just a follow up on amateur radio people, we believe in their services enough that we have now made their, them our primary backup. We did have, or we still do have some ability to go to VHF if the 800 goes down for an immediate usage, but for long duration or long range, we've already put them into place as our secondary, as our primary backup. So their service is pretty good. It's pretty top notch for being pieced together by a bunch of volunteers, if you know what I'm saying, so. Last thing I have is our rescue trucks being pulled off the assembly line. Puts a delay, obviously, in its manufacturing. We've contacted the manufacturing company, which has been sold and purchased by someone else. Usually built into a contract for this type of manufacturing or certain factory visits. It's a, it's not a freebie. You actually pay it in your contract and we've advised them that we want to come down and inspect what the problem is and that we feel like the cost should be on them and not on us. So we're negotiating that at this time. I'm hoping to be able to get a crew down there by November to see what the problem is. So has something to do with the PTO, which doesn't mean a whole lot to probably a whole lot of people, but it does to us. So it's about running the generators and everything, so. That's all I have. I'd be willing to stand for any questions. Thank you very much.
Waste Water, Gary.
All of our projects are on track. Nothing big going on, so available if you have any questions.
Questions for Jerry. Thank you. Stormwater.
Gary's on vacation.
Park.
Will's on vacation.
Fall break.
Fall break.
Public Works. Julie's here tonight.
I thought Adriano was going to do it.
I gave you guys a handout before the meeting. Rob wanted to just get your approval to look into applying for these two grants to maybe get a shared use path on East Main Street for pedestrians, so. And the deadline for the grant is November 22nd and then if you guys want to have a work study on it, perfectly fine. I just have a deadline, so. Rob has spoken to Gary and Laura that I know of. We, I'm going to try to use funding from a fund called HSIP to, and our grant matched in would only be 10%, so I'll try to stay in that. If we can have your approval, just to, we're not going to apply. I'll let you guys know when it gets closer to. when it gets closer to the deadline, but just to pursue this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I provided all the council members with the monthly statistics for September. Page two, kind of the key thing that I've seen that sticks out this past month. The officers made seven OWI arrests. That's the high for the year as far as one month. Enforcement intoxicated driving is really important in the community. Players getting injured out there and saving lives. So the officers did a really good job in the month of September. Looks like they had seven OWI arrests. Also, the officers, we sent several officers to in-service training. September, they conducted emergency vehicle operations, driving in service at the Indiana Law Enforcement Academy, where they got to go hone their skills in driving vehicles. We also sent officers to first-line supervisors and leadership courses. It's also important for us as a younger department to try to build some skills in our younger officers. Self and Detective Allison followed up on a couple stolen cars we had in Clear Creek. We went up to Indianapolis and found our suspects. Charges filed, so we've recovered one of the vehicles, still looking for the other. Follow-up on earlier conversation, the roundabout. I personally was out there for about 40 minutes today. I sit on the east side. I'll continue to do so, and we also sent out messages to all the officers. We're going to try to hit it harder and try to see if we can get anybody cutting through the grass. I didn't personally see anybody cut through the grass today, but I did see a lot of people pulling into finer details, finer details and turning around there. So they actually have to go through the closed road sign to get to that business which is open. So I'll continue to sit out there and split time with some of the officers, and we'll see what we can get stopped out there. On the final note from me, I just want to recognize the Danville girls soccer team, they won the sectional this year, and they might already, you guys might already did that, I probably missed it. I'll entertain any questions you guys have. Yes, sir.
So a few days ago, I was by Dollar General. Old white Cadillac, about 18 years old, two guys in it. And I think they were selling drugs there. I stopped one of the policemen, and he went by there, but I was gone. Tonight, I was driving through the park, and I saw the car again. He had pulled up right in front of the basketball guys, just one laying back, you know, they park in the front. Car, so I had called you guys, and you had two guys there pretty quick. They went to each side of the car, and I don't know what happened after that. So there are people that are not from here. I drive around a lot with a dog. Never seen him before until this week. They seem to be popping everywhere.
The guys have made several arrests in the last couple of weeks from people from out of town. We're seeing a lot of people coming through. Of course, Covered Bridge is bringing some people through as well, but we're getting a lot of people from the west side of Indy that's coming out in our area here, so.
Police there, fake, I guess.
Let's hope not, but it's very possible.
Well, they stick out like sore thumbs here.
Well, anytime that you see that police call, and like you said, the officers will come, and I'm glad that they responded quickly, so hopefully, they ended up finding...
They were there pretty quick. They were there in five minutes.
That's pretty good for us, yeah.
Because they were still there.
Good. Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak? Glad to see the Boy Scouts here this evening. Anyone else? Gary? Anyone else?
I'd like to just say, congratulations. We've got girls volleyball winning a sectional. Danville Sports is really putting itself on the map. Boys football starts this week. Thanks to Boy Scouts, and Daniel Church, you had a heck of a game on Saturday. Defensive nightmare. That's all.
Don't you Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts want to say something?
Well, that was what I was going to say. It's Marching Band goes to state competition on Saturday. Coach Lawrence shared with us at, when I was at the volleyball sectional win on Saturday night, that, I believe it's eight sectional wins that Danville has won over the last three semesters, so that speaks very highly of, of what Danville can provide. So I know I'm, I'm pretty proud of them as well, and I can say that without even having a student involved other than band, so. So that's great, so. That's all I have. Claim docket.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed?